Obviously very different and what could be even more devastating storm. So I guess we're all on Lauren, right? So I'd like to call the order. The Board of Selectment Emergency Meeting for Saturday, August 21st. And the first item on the agenda is discuss and take action to declare a state of emergency resolution as follows. The Board of Selectment of the Town of Madison in anticipation of the impending arrival of Tropical Storm Henri, hereby declares a local civil preparedness emergency commencing at 12:00 a.m. on August 22nd, 2021, and lasting for as long thereafter as the town, as in the state of duress from damage resulting from the storm, but no longer than one week without further action by the board. The First Selectment is authorized to take such action as she deems necessary in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section 28-8A. I get motion.
So move second.
Okay, great. So I thought maybe real quick. Sam, they, I thought there was supposed to be like a 6:30 update from the region, but I didn't see anything. Did you get any updated tracking?
So the region didn't, but so I looked at our, my program. And it's, um, it's moved further west. So we're gonna, it's gonna actually track over to Haven.
Yeah, I saw that. The last thing I saw at least on the news really this morning was Milford was now the center. We were obviously last night highlighted. But I don't think it cha, it doesn't change the storm surge issue. And they've now issued a hurricane warning. We went from a watch to a warning.
Yeah, so it's not gonna, actually, we're gonna be on the, on the worst wind side. Probably not gonna get as much rain, but we're gonna get more stronger winds because the right side of the storm is the strongest for the winds. And they just sent another update here for the eight o'clock. So if I could figure this out here. So right now, it's kind of, it's tracked more west. It's actually gonna go over Long Island and into, into the New Haven area. Just a little bit west in the Haven. So that's kind of bad. More, it's worse for us, but the good news is, is that the storm weakened a little bit. You know, yesterday, these were 85, 90 mile an hour winds out here. Now they're down to 80. And it's not supposed to, they had a hurricane force all the way up to make a landfall with us yesterday. Now it's down to 70 miles an hour, which is still significant. We're not gonna, we're not gonna downplay this at all, but you know, we're gonna get up to anywhere between 40 and 70 mile an hour winds. So there's gonna be a lot of tree and power line down, down. We could probably expect, you know, again, like, like we had in ICA's this, you know, probably a week of areas where there's not gonna be any power. High tide is at 11:30 tomorrow morning. And with their three to five foot storm surge expected, you know, it's probably gonna be some significant flooding along the shoreline.
Sam, is it moving faster than expected? I, I saw that on the news this morning that it was coming during a low tide as opposed to a high tide now, potentially?
Yeah, so it did slow down a little bit. So we're gonna get, the effects of it are gonna still come around Sunday morning, about eight, nine o'clock Sunday morning, we're gonna start getting some winds. Let me move this up here. And as you can see, as it starts approaching, the red hurricane force winds kind of disappear. So right about, so about 25 hours from now, we're gonna start getting the wind effects of this. So around nine, nine o'clock Sunday morning, we should start seeing some effects of this. Now, this isn't perfect science. It was a model, so. But they are, they are pretty good in the past. You know, when you, we're able to compare what they forecasted to what actually happened afterwards, and it's, here is it pretty good, right on. So fortunately, this, you know, the, hopefully we'll get past the high tide mark before we get the storm surge. But it, you know, it's a, this is a counterclockwise rotation, so the water is, you know, getting pushed into the sound. That's why they're expecting such a high surge. Plus the rain, we're gonna, we're gonna get about three inches of rain with it.
Um, do you have those flood map things?
Yes. Do that show up?
Yes. Okay, so here we go. So the-
So everything in the, everything in the orange is the evacuation zone for a category one hurricane. It even has Todd Wall in it, so I don't know what we're gonna do about that. My recommendation would just be do, do things south of Route 1.
And it would only include the orange?
The orange is category one to get the, the yellow is category one and two.
So, um, experience in the past when we've tried an evacuation, can you summarize it?
Well, most of, a lot of people don't leave, and then they end up calling in the height of the storm to try to get out. I mean, it's, it's kind of a crapshoot. And you have people that I've, like in Sandy, there was a kid walking down there with his surfboard right at the beginning of the storm was gonna go surfing. And we basically told them, turn around and go back home. And we just happened to catch him as we were leaving the beach area. And his mother was standing on the porch and he kind of turned around, looked at his mother, and his mother called him back. So I don't know why his mother let him go to begin with, but you know, that's what we're dealing with sometimes. So people do a lot of crazy things.
Sam, is there any reason that we should not declare an evacuation?
No, I think you're better off doing it and getting as many people out as possible. You know, rather than trying to do a mass rescue later. You know, I mean, obviously, we, you know, you're, we're predicting stuff, so we, you know, if we had a crystal ball, it'd be a lot easier, but unfortunately, you know, we have to go by what, and they're gonna have a call at one o'clock today, but I think that's a little bit late to get people to, to start evacuating. If we're gonna tell them to evacuate, we should tell them now, especially with the storm gonna, you know, potentially start coming in, you know, by, by, you know, by tomorrow morning.
Um, has, uh, has dispatch gotten any calls? Or I didn't put that, you know, reference, but did, did PD get any calls about evacuation when my message went out?
Yeah, so they did. Well, I don't know about after your message went out, but before your message went out, somebody had called some person that's on a ventilator on Island Avenue. And he asked if, you know, if there's a place for him to go if he loses power or do whatever. So I told, I told the dispatch that we're gonna open up the shelter and he could go there. So I don't know how many more people-
Jim, right?
Yes. Yep.
Sam, as far as you know, are joining towns declaring evacuations?
Um, I have not, I don't know. I don't have that information. We haven't talked with them yet. I think the state, I think the state's gonna recommend it at, at one o'clock. When we have our one o'clock call, I think that's what, I think that's what the one o'clock call is about.
So that, I'm just looking here, because I thought that it was, oh yeah, that's that one. Okay. I mean, I think, and, and are there different levels? Is it basically just, we talked a little bit about this last night, but we would just make this a mandatory, right? Are there different kind of recommended versus mandatory?
So you could do, so you could do voluntary or mandatory. Most of the time when you say voluntary, people just kind of shrug it off. At least if you say mandatory, they're gonna take it a little bit more serious. Whether they leave or not is another story, but.
How, how do you enforce that? And then what happens? What, I mean?
Is there, are there legal implications if people don't leave?
I think the chief can answer that question. I'm not, I'm not sure about the legal.
I mean, does it just mean that people kind of forego their, I don't wanna say their right to be rescued, but you know what I mean? Like you kind of say, well, it doesn't, if you stay, we're not gonna necessarily be able to.
Well, well, they could, because, because once the, once the winds reach 50 miles an hour, the emergency services are not going out. You know, every source, I think every source is at 35 miles an hour. They're not coming out after that, but, but the standard for emergency services is at 50 miles an hour, and that's, that's it.
And that's for the purposes of keeping them safe too, right?
Correct. Yes.
And so Sandy was a mandatory evacuation?
Yes.
Okay. And Irene, we didn't do an evacuation, did we, for Irene?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
I think that, that was like kind of an unexpected. I think that it was as bad as it was. How many people went to the shelters when there was a mandatory evacuation?
So I think Sandy, there was about a dozen. And they stayed, they stayed there as long as we kept feeding them.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Once, once we pulled the MREs out, they left.
Well, I think that what's a little different here too is, you know, people could book hotels in other parts of Connecticut, but now they've actually broadened the tropical storm, I guess, warning now to the middle of the state. Not that that would necessarily, that's not the same as getting flooded. But, um, you know, I'm just trying to figure out where people go typically. And a lot of people in this area, I think, do have options available to them. We, we're, we're gonna have to pull a list together of homebound in these zones. So the process then would be if we were to do a mandatory evacuation, we would, we have the ability to kind of do ring fence alerts to people. And just so everybody's aware, those, those annoying emergency alerts that were going out repeatedly last night, and I was getting them off and on.
I got like 12 of them. Yeah.
Yeah, they're, those are all state, right? Sam, the, the, the emergency blast, that was all from the state system with storm surge watches and hurricane watches?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that, so that's state, not county by county? Is it state, is it overall?
So the state, well, no, I think the state picks areas, but they're the ones controlling that. Because I had a couple of people tell me, stop doing these. I'm like, I'm not doing these. This isn't the town. This is the state system. Sam, did you get those down where you are?
I did not get those works.
Okay, so they are ring fencing them or whatever based on where your phone is located?
Actually, Demis just sent the, their update, their first update out today.
Okay.
I was driving on 95 from Newark Airport, and we got 12 of them.
Yeah, you probably hit every time.
Every county.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, they were really, you know, but I, hopefully this is, I mean, this is the first time that I think I've ever had those things happen before. So this is pretty, pretty significant what the expectations are. You know, I think that, pardon?
So they're still saying moderate to major flooding, 48 inches of rain, moderate to major tree, tree and power line damage, now 68 mile an hour winds. And evacuation time. I'll have to pull up their report.
Sam, you'll send that out when, when, when we're done with this, right?
Correct.
So I think, obviously, we're gonna do a little bit more homework on this. But in terms of, you know, voting on the resolution, is everybody comfortable taking a vote on the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great.
What is the timing for making a decision on evacuation? When do you want to, I mean, because I would think communication needs to go out pretty quickly.
So we're gonna have our operations team meeting right after this?
Yeah, at nine.
And so we'll probably figure it out then, because they just sent this chart out for evacuation timing.
Oh, they did. Okay, so. Yeah, I mean, it was yesterday, the, the call, at least the state had, was definitely that they thought that they were gonna be going this direction. And this has just even gotten worse since the call we had yesterday of, of the impact, so. Uh, so yeah, something will go out this morning. The earlier the better. I'm, I'm, you know, it, it sounds like we're going to do a mandatory, you know, I think in terms of enforcement, Chief Drum? What, what is, good morning. So Aaron was asking, and I have a similar question, if we do a mandatory evacuation, you know, what does that mean from an enforcement standpoint?
And I think we're gonna, one, draw on Sandy and Irene, what we encountered there with a tropical storm that came at high tide, and also was close to hitting center on to Madison. I would think the sooner the better. I'm comfortable with it, sooner the better. I think that, and Sam brought up the, the point that at, at some point, we're not gonna be able to send services down there. We'll use the, the beach roads as an example, because once that surge comes, we're gonna have three to five feet of water on the roads. So what we've done in the past is we have the officers and, and they're ready to go, to go basically door to door all through the shoreline area that we have in developments and encourage people to leave if it's not mandatory. They have to understand that once this event starts, we're not going to be able to get to them. So that we have to, we drive that home, while people understand that. And then once the storm passes, we're going to have, and Sam can recall also, Middle Beach West, we had about five feet of water that stayed there for a period of time. So at, 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 we, at that point, the police department is gonna have control points going back towards that area and trying to control people from going in. And, and so I think the sooner the better.
And, and, and I guess the hot, you know, the mandatory is just to basically highlight the significance of this event, that we will be taking the step. And, you know, in terms of, you know, forcing people out, obviously, that's not something we're really, you know, capable of doing. We don't have the resources to do that, and we wouldn't want to do that. But we want to emphasize to the public that this is extraordinarily serious if you're down in these areas. Access points, just real quick. You know, you, this is somebody who just, you know, biking around all these beach communities. You have some homes that are elevated, higher up, you know, several blocks back from the shoreline. But just because you have a high house and your house may not flood, your road may flood, correct? And so you have some people that just will be stranded for a while. What areas is that likely? I know Neck Road is a problem, correct?
From the past, you've already seen the backup of water, most of the beach roads. You can see it also where the rivers come down and meet the, the sound. You're gonna see it most certainly Neck Road, where it goes out to Circle Beach. You gotta remember that, one of the storms, I'm not sure if Sandy can remind me, it was Irene. It essentially moved the beach about a hundred some odd yards inland and devastated some of the homes. We had people that we encouraged to leave, did not want to leave. It was a non-mandatory evacuation at that point. And they're, they're reaching out on cell phones at the height of the storm, asking for help.
Though during Sandy, it knocked at least four houses off the foundations down there. It collapsed. We had, we, one, one lady was still in the house. We, actually, they didn't want to leave. And the house was falling apart. And once the house is- Their oxygen tank, we had a, we had abandoned their oxygen tank because it was underneath a bunch of debris. She was on oxygen. So then, then during Sandy, I think during both Irene and Sandy, the west side of Route 1 was blocked for a day or so. We couldn't get into Guilford. That was all flooded.
So I think that the takeaway, you know, is that the, you know, just because you might feel that your house has never flooded or is elevated and you're down in this area, this is also about being trapped potentially for a period of time, a long period of time, extended period of time because of the road impact, so. So any other questions from board members? And then the expectation is we will be getting this out, you know, the next, probably, we meet at nine o'clock. So probably by 10 o'clock, I think we would have. And, and the message, there's gonna be, just for everybody's public acknowledgement, there's gonna be specific messages that are gonna be sent to people in the impacted areas. And we have, we have the ability to do emergency alerts for those people. So, but we'll, we'll do a broader message to the whole town, just highlighting what's happening. So, um, you know, if you don't get a, 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 a specific thing telling you to evacuate, you're not in the evacuation zone, but you will get an alert from the town just saying that there are parts of the town that will get evacuated. Will we be posting the roads that are affected by this? So, because obviously, it's not perfect, you know, not, if people don't have a cellphone, we're gonna also go into landlines and using all those resources. But if somebody hasn't heard and they're worried about their road, do we have a list of impacted homes and streets that we could post on the website that people could check?
We could probably figure something out.
Maybe just posting the map that Sam showed us.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, it's a little, you're right, it does show most of the road names. It's hard to read, but we'll try to get a good visual of that and post it so people can check.
Is the message going to be basically south of Route 1, though?
Yeah, pretty much.
I mean, I think we just gotta be crystal clear.
And the state's recommending right now that you should start evacuating by nine o'clock tonight. And the latest is three o'clock tomorrow morning.
Okay, that's the timing, because I know yesterday we weren't quite sure, so 9:00 p.m. tonight.
Yeah, I think the more lead time we can give people, the better.
Yeah.
Peggy, EverSource has been touting that they've brought in incredible amounts of resources from other areas. Is there any way for us to have any confidence in these, in these statements that they're making?
I mean, you know, they're participating in all the preparedness calls that the town is, and they're also confirming that. So I, rather than going around and just counting trucks, you know, there's gonna be a lot more, I think, at this next call to ensure, you know, I think we're gonna want to find out exactly what's positioned for us. And including this whole make-safe crews, you know, that are kind of the first to go in to allow roads to be, you know, wired so that public safety can come in and clear things. They need to check wire. So we'll be focusing on that, I think, this morning with our calls. And we have a liaison for the town. And we're asked, we asked, did we get an answer about if there's gonna have somebody physically here? Or is this all gonna be virtual?
Somebody, they, they sent the request last night. They said somebody will be assigned. They'll, they'll let us know who, once they, once they make that determination.
Yeah.
Do we have confidence that that will happen? I mean, last, last storm, that was a little bit of a cluster.
Last storm was all virtual, remember? We were operating, everybody was operating virtual. So the EverSource people were actually out of their houses, and then they lost power and internet, so.
Communication was challenged.
Yeah, yeah, so. I'm sorry, Sam, you were saying though that, you know, we are opening up the physical EOC here.
Yeah, because, because of COVID last time, they didn't want to send anybody out.
So we will have an EOC here. We'll be in person.
Peggy, assuming significant power outage, how will people get actual physical communication? You know, once power goes down, is there a, a place that they can get messages or know what's going on? You know, assuming that.
I, I think-
They may not have access to the internet or?
Well, I think we continue to do the community messaging like we did during ESAIAS. I did a daily update, and those are posted on the website. Most people have, you know, cell phones, so I know a lot of people just were accessing that via cellphone. We, those blasts also go to landlines. And if you have a old fashioned landline, you know, that doesn't require, it's not Comcast, but it's a wired service, you'll get it through that. And we'll be updating the town website. So the town campus gym is the emergency shelter. You know, and then we're going to have a plan to roll out like we did after ESAIAS, alternate locations to go to get showers, charge your phones. We had, we used Daniel Hand last summer, you know, for people to have access. We had water available there as well as showering facilities. So we'll roll all that out, you know? I think the, what was offered last summer is probably the plan that we'll stick with. Because we, remember in Madison, it was like over 80% of Madison lost power after ESAIAS. So they're saying it's gonna be comparable to that for this, or even worse. And then on compounded onto that, you have flooding and evacuations. So, um, so, you know, we will have everything ready and available for people once the power outage has happened. But this storm has to recede, it has to be safe, you know, before people should be trying to access, you know, charging facilities and things like that. So get your phones charged up. Get all your backup plans in place and just be ready to shelter in places. Typically, the recommendation is three days. You should have enough basic amenities to last you three days. That's what the American Red Cross always advises. So, and so I would just assume that that, that's what we should be doing now. And I will highlight the gas is, you know, going to be in demand because a lot of people have generators, so keep that in mind as you make your preparations. I know that the, uh, federal highways now all in Connecticut after, I think it was after Sandy, all have backup generators now at the Madison filling station and stuff. But in terms of in town, I don't, I, Sam, I know we talked about this last summer, but I think we should probably double check which stations have backup generators, gas stations.
I don't, I don't believe any, any do. So we did have a, an agreement with Madison Service Center, which they get with their gas, so we'll have to figure out which, which one we're gonna partner up with.
The other thing I will highlight is get any, for the public, if anybody's watching this, is to get your prescriptions filled, medication, you know, all the stores are open today, and just make sure you're prepared. And we're gonna coordinate with, you know, CVS and all that. We have contacts for all of them to ma, to see what their plans are. But that's an important thing too, because sometimes people forget about that, and then they run out of their medication Monday or something, and then things are closed. I know CVS did work very, opened really quickly after ESAIAS. And downtown's power was restored, I think, within 28 hours of the last storm. But it just, we don't know what the pattern's gonna be for this one.
So just, just so you guys know, the, the way they like to re, restore things is by circuits. You know, we do have a list of critical facilities that are on the priority list. But after that, they like to store, restore things by circuits, and it's kind of gets confusing as, when, you know, we have blocked roads and all that other stuff. It's, it's where we get into the argument with them. But hopefully having a rep in the EOC this time, it'll help with all that stuff.
I want to ask two, two selectmen questions, Peggy. First of all, we, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday night, and assuming communications are somewhat interrupted, is that something we should cancel?
I mean, I guess maybe that does make sense. Maybe we look at the calendar and try to reschedule it. We can do that. We could, I hadn't really thought about Monday night yet. But yes. I mean, you know, you're, you're right, because most likely, I, I don't see how we're gonna avoid power outages. The town is not gonna be in a, in a position for, and I think some of us might not be in a position to, to be able to attend something like that. So, so I'll talk to Lauren about that scheduling wise. We could move it till later in the week, or we could, I know we were holding a place on August 30th. We could just move it to August 30th. It pushes it out a week, I think. So that's a possibility. I'll send out an email.
As long as it's a postponement too, it doesn't make it a special meeting. So if you postpone everything to the 30th, it's still a regular meeting.
Okay. Does that makes, I mean, August 30th, we were all holding that date. Do, are we comfortable post, you know, postponing it a week? I mean, we're probably gonna have to have emergency meetings because of where we're gonna be providing updates and stuff on the storm, but just in terms of the regular meeting. Because that agenda was posted, correct, Lauren?
Yeah, so we'll just postpone it. That's, and that's not a big deal.
My, my second question had to do with emergency meetings, Peggy. I, I don't know whether we'll, we'll all be enjoying cell service or not, but, um. Um, how, how, how can we hold or schedule a meeting? Uh, would it have to be an in-person meeting? And how do we get the word out to the selectmen and to the public that we're having such a meeting?
Well, we went through this with ESAIAS and I think we, we were able to, um. Have, uh, we had it over Zoom. Because of COVID. So, um, now I think for emergency meetings, it might make more sense to just do them in person, depending on the power situation. So, uh, you know, we can plan on that, having them in person, as long as people can get out of their houses. So, um, and then we can do it hybrid if there's power. So I think we can figure that out, but probably plan on in person for any emergency meetings. I would anticipate the earliest would be Monday. Um, to do a debrief from the storm. Um, so, and I have everybody's, uh, cell phone. So I probably, I might even just text to make sure that people are getting it. I know email sometimes, and just to forewarn you. We do not have a backup system for our town email. System. And we have now satellite backup for internet service, which is what we put in place after the last year's storm. Um, but there is not a. Offsite backup, correct? I can't remember the details of this, but there's a possibility, because this happened during ESAIAS, where the town email. Was not necessarily functioning for a period of time.
So I think that, um, when it switches over to satellite, if we, if we lose, so we have our primary. Internet connection and we have a backup internet connection, which both of them are pretty robust, but in the event that it switches to the satellite, then the email services won't work.
Well, let me, uh. We should talk to Art because remember he made a comment yesterday about that there's still an issue about that. So. I will alert the board because it may be that, you know. I just, I think we need to be cautious and make sure. We know things are working and I would tend to text around if there was gonna be a problem, um, you know, so. Uh, but I would plan on an in-person meeting on Monday and, um, and we'll go from there. Um, so we'll start, I think we probably should get moving on getting these. Uh, communications ready to send out this morning.
I just had, uh, just a question about preparations down at the beach. Like as far as, you know. Porta potties. Kayaks, all those things, are those all going to be? Removed or secured?
I'll let Austin, I know they were working all day yesterday getting things ready.
So kayaks will not be removed. Those should be secured to the racks anyway. Porta potties cannot, they won't be able to pick them up. They have, the companies have porta potties all over Connecticut. So that, that won't happen, but. All of the lifeguard stands have been secured and moved away from the beaches. The gate guard huts, uh, will be secured. All the flags have been taken down. You know, obviously we recommend people remove their boats from the moorings at. Um, West Wharf, that would probably be a good idea. But everything, everything that can be secure is secured down there.
Also, just, uh, we, Public Works did inspect, uh, the problematic drains yesterday. I know I've gotten some questions from people about that as well. Um, so, you know, they went around and inspected some of those, uh, troublesome areas with the drains. So that things are cleaned out and, um, you know. I mean, the volume that we're gonna be dealing with here is probably the drains aren't gonna make a big difference, but it helps obviously to have those, um, prepared. And then all the, uh, beach and rack equipment has been moved away, this, you know, trucks and all that stuff has been moved, uh, removed from the surf club down to town campus. So any other questions? And I guess we can adjourn. No? Okay. All right, I guess, uh, meeting is adjourned, everybody. And stay safe and we'll be in contact with everyone. So, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Bye.